You are on record.
Meeting of the Township of Precipining Troy Hills, Plannengorke from Monday, October 21st, 2024, 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora would you call the roll please?
Mayor Barberio.
Here.
Mr. DeDeeche.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Councilman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stanziel.
Over here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winters. We also have our other planner, Mr. Zavoe, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here that has an item they wish to bring to this board that's not on tonight's agenda? Hearing and seeing none. We've got to go through some resolutions first. We have a resolution for application number 24516 and 24515. Is there any discussion or is somebody willing to move that?
There were some minor revisions from the originally circulated draft, but they were not substantive.
All right, do I have a motion, uh, for 24515?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeDeeche.
Should I do both together or?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
All right, so I have a motion to approve application number 24:515, Avalon Bay Communities Inc., 1 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.7, 3 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.12, 7 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.8. amended preliminary and final major site plan to relocate unit types, utility room, light poles, and plantings, remove screens and gates and parking. Application number 24:516, Avalon Bay Communities Inc., 2 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.2, 4 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.2, 1633 Littleton Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.1. amended preliminary and major site plan to relocate units, remove patio doors, remove screens and gates and parking.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Nora would you call the roll please?
Barberio.
Yes.
DeDeeche.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Math.
I think I missed the meeting when this happened.
Uh...
I know it says them a lot, but I don't think them a lot.
I don't know. Napolitano.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stanziel.
Yes.
There you go. All right, move this on.
I'm sorry.
In our agenda, right now, what's showing on our agenda is a closed session. I'm going to turn to our attorney and ask her how she wants to go about this.
So Nora put it, um, put the resolution in the agenda, just that I'd like to speak about potential litigation matters with the board, um, but no pub, no action will be taken in public se, or in the closed session. It'll just be a brief discussion.
Then that moves us, uh, to application number 24:522, the District of 1515 Urban Renewal LLC, 1515 Route 10, Block 200, Lots 1.4, 1.05, and 1.06. Preliminary and major, and final major site plan would see variance for two permanent outdoor dining structures and signage.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to...
Shouldn't we make a motion?
Wait.
Go into closed session first?
Just...
Yes, so I would like to go into closed session before we hear the applications tonight.
Both of the applications?
Just the one.
Just, so, just before the district at 1515, so if you want to hear the Malagros one first, it's up to you.
Well, then, hear the Malagros one first? Or do you want to get rolling with the?
Let's get rolling 1515 because they were here from the last meeting.
Yes, all right.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna ask everybody to leave?
What about the video tape?
I stop it.
You can stop it.
I will stop it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Do you want to go my office or?
We can go into mayor's office.
I mean...
Instead of making everybody here leave.
Well, not a lot of people here. You know, it's probably better because I don't know if you all can fit in that one session, but I don't want nobody hearing our discussion.
Okay.
Shaw.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith. Here. Stanziel.
Up here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here. All right, so now we're gonna call up for application number 24522, District at 1515 Urban Renewal LLC. Preliminary and final major site plan would see variance for two permanent outdoor dining structures and signage. Case was carried from October 7th, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nicole Magdziak, M-A-G-D-Z-I-A-K, for the record of the law firm, Dave Pittney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. By way of just some brief background, we appeared at the meeting on October 7th in connection with this application for amended preliminary and final site plan approval conditional use and C variances. We are seeking approval related to the mixed-use project, which is currently under construction at what was formerly identified as 1515 Route 10. As we presented through our expert testimony at the meeting on October 7th, we're seeking approval for two structures which will be attached to building C over outdoor dining. So the outdoor dining was previously proposed and shown on the plans. These two structures would provide shade over that outdoor dining. We are not seeking approval related to the actual operation of that dining, but these structures themselves that are attached to the building. We're also seeking relief related to the signage for the tenant spaces in order to provide both a logo sign and, um, word, you know, the name of the tenant on both the front and back of building C and also on building B. These signs are, only one sign is permitted per frontage unless you're a corner tenant, in which case you can have one over each door. And there's also signage that is permitted on the backside of building C facing Route 10, but smaller than what we're proposing. So we're seeking variance relief related to that. Just a little bit of additional background, we had filed an application to the same applicant in December to this board seeking a relief, or not relief, but proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan and asking this board to evaluate them and see if we could get support for that effort. We are seeking amendments related to seven different items. We presented in January and February to this board. This board issued a letter of support to the council recommending that the redevelopment plan be adopted. No action has yet been taken on that. We are still seeking those amendments to the redevelopment plan, but these two particular items of those seven are part of this pending application as a result of just the, the timing of construction. These are really critical components to get tenants leased up in building C and to continue with construction of the project. If you drive by the site, you would notice that buildings A and B are really far along at this point, but C has not started yet. So, um, since these items require C variance relief, they are items that we can get relief from this particular board for in connection with the development of the property. So that's why we had pulled out those two items and, and applied with this application at this time. They really are critical components and will really help the project be a success in order to gain tenants, particularly those two restaurant spaces. We're hoping to have two upscale and really quality tenants in those spaces, and the outdoor dining covers are really important. We also previously presented testimony from all of our experts, our civil engineer, our architect, our traffic engineer, our planner, and you also heard from the applicant's representative. That concluded our expert testimony related to this application. We did adjourn for two weeks until this meeting and, and as we had represented at the October 7th meeting, we did reach out to the township, um, mayor, your office, and also the business administrator, the attorneys related to the tax appeal and redevelopment and the township attorney and Ms. Steinle, just so we had everybody connected in one correspondence to set up a meeting to discuss the tax appeal and pilot. Those items were brought up at the last meeting, though they are completely unrelated to this particular application and should be considered in, in the decision that's made on this application. We did, you know, we heard the feedback. We, we do think it's important. We are pursuing a settlement of the tax appeal. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have an all-hands meeting because of some people being out of the country and then unfortunately some people being sick. So we are still working towards that. We are here tonight to hopefully conclude this particular application. We did not hear any feedback that was, um, it, you know, countervailing testimony by boards, experts, or the public as to the items that we are seeking relief for, so we don't have any further testimony to offer this evening. We do appreciate the feedback of the board so far, and as we said, we are working towards those items that are unrelated, resolving those items that are unrelated to this particular application, but are here seeking the amended site plan approval, um, conditional use approval and C variances this evening.
Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
There are proposed temporary signs. Has there been testimony on those? Will you present those tonight or?
We are not going to present those. That would be part of a separate application in the event the applicant seeks to move forward with that signage. For the board's information, we are working on some temporary signs related to leasing, particularly of the residential component of the project, which we've been working through the zoning office with. There was an identification that, um, by the zoning officer that some of those signs and, um, the planner's office, that some of them may require variance relief to the extent that the applicant is wanting to move forward with those signs. We will file a separate application specific just to those temporary signs. That would be processed in the normal course of board application.
Should I be looking for participation, Mr. Winter? Okay.
If you, that's everything. Our board members.
All right, so that's your case at this point?
Yeah.
You're just, okay.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask right now, not that I expect anything, if there's any member of the public who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter at this time, either for or against hearing and seeing none. This closes the, the public portion of the evidentiary, uh, portion of the, of the proceeding. Um, do we want to go into conference and have a discussion, or do we want to just go to a motion and a vote?
I'm fine with a motion and vote.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeDeeche.
A motion to approve application number 24:522, the District at 1515 Urban Renewal LLC, 1515 Route 10, Block 200, Lots 1.4, 1.05, and 1.06. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variance for two permanent outdoor dining structures and signage.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Apologize.
Are there any, uh, items that should have been included as amendments into the, or as conditions, I should say?
So there were some conditions that were agreed to at the la, prior meeting that the applicant will submit revised plans regarding the change in the pipe slope, I think that was my notes, um, or change back to the original. Uh, the applicant agrees to work with the board planner to address additional screening as needed regarding the relocation of the transformers along Route 10. Applicant will add bubbled notes to the plans regarding changes in the architectural footprint of the building and will provide line-by-line site changes in a list, um, to compare the prior plans to the current plans, um, in accordance with the comments from the board The, the applicant will also provide a list of all previously approved and proposed signs with the areas and provide some sort of alphanumeric designation with diagrams to the township zoning officer. Um, gas in the buildings is natural gas, would, would need additional approvals. I'm not sure what that note exactly puts. I'll clarify that one, um, with the applicant's attorney and then the applicant will have to comply with, oh, okay, that was for the heaters. If they're not natural gas, if there's heaters on the outside, okay, then they would need additional approval. But if they're natural gas heaters, then they'll, I think that would be, that's fine because they'll be tied into the building. Um, the applicant will comply with all ABC requirements for alcohol licensing. Um, the applicant will provide trip generation updates to the board engineer, um, even though they have been reduced, just provide that for the record. The applicant will show the updated circulation in revised plans. And just generally, it was agreed to that the applicant would have to obtain licensure from the township regarding operation of outdoor dining and renew it in accordance with whatever the township code states. Okay, I think that was everything.
All right, so the motion and the second included all of those. Mr. Mayor, you have?
Yeah, um, before I, we go to the motion to vote on it, um, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but since you brought up the tax appeal, my recommendation to contact tomorrow immediately to try to straighten this tax appeal out. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but since you did, it's, um, something that's been hanging over our head and I don't want it to hang over much longer. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Nora would you call the roll please?
Barberio.
Yes.
DeDeeche.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are changing planners here. We're gonna go to Ms. Christine Winter. For Mr. Zavoe. As we change.
Take care.
All right, we're now gonna call application number 24:511, Malagros 383, 3835, Route 46, Block 136, Lot 66, Lot 03, minor site plan with C variance to legalize in addition building mounted lighting and a container storage.
Yeah, give me a minute on the waivers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My name is Keith Lockman from law firm, Amy Lucina Taylor, and once again, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight, we are seeking amended site plan approval with both variance relief, as the chairman described, for the addition of an approximately 1,140 total square foot open dining pergola attached to the existing structure, a storage container, and a lighting. We require several C variances with this, um, application, so I'm gonna just go through them right now, and we do have a planner who's going to testify as to the justification for it. First, minimum front yard setback where 80 feet is required, 78.1 feet is proposed from Lackawanna Avenue. Yard location for accessory structure for storage container permitted inside rear yard to be located in front yard. Minimum parking spaces, 127 are required, 126 spaces are proposed. Minimum setback for monument sign along Walsh Drive, 15 feet required, 2 feet existing and proposed, no change. And finally, minimum driveway setback to building, 5 feet required, 2.3 feet proposed. We also have, uh, a number of pre-existing non-conformities on the site, um, with no change proposed, but for the record, I'm gonna go through them really quickly. Minimum lot area where 120,000 square feet is required, 95,977 square feet is existing and proposed, again, no change. Minimum interior driveway width, 24 feet required, 23.2 feet existing and proposed, no change. Minimum front yard setback for off-street parking and loading, 30 feet is required, 27.8 feet on Route 46, 11 feet on Walsh Drive, 29 feet on Lackawanna Avenue is existing and proposed, no change. Minimum side yard setback for off-street parking and loading, 10 feet is required, 0 feet existing and proposed, no change. Maximum sign height for freestanding sign along US Route 46, 15 feet permitted, 24 feet existing and proposed, no change. And finally, minimum sign setback for freestanding sign along US Route 46, 26 feet required, 19 feet existing and proposed, no change. We have received the review memos from your board professionals, including your planner and engineer, and are prepared to address all comments and fully comply with all requirements. We also intend to re-strike the parking lot as was recommended by your engineer. With me tonight is our architect, Joseph Donato, who will discuss our plans, and we also have professional engineer and planner, Andy Strah, also with me is the applicant owner who's available to answer any questions. So if the board may, I'd like to call my first witness.
Just a moment.
Sure.
Do we have any waivers that we need to go through?
We have a handful of waivers. Um, they're mostly related to the existing nature of the property. So we've got a waiver for existing proposed signs, existing proposed storm drainage design, location and description of existing proposed landscaping, solid waste disposal, um, regarding the description of proposed use, including employees, post-shifts, et cetera, temporary contractors' construction, structures, and again, existing and proposed signs. Um, we don't have any objections to those. Most of those are existing and expect some testimony as such.
All right, so do I hear a motion approving the waivers as outlined in the, uh, planner's report of, uh, what's the date on there? It's September 27th, 2024?
I'll offer the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to call Mr. Donato. He could be sworn at.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear affirm that, that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, yeah.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Joseph Donato, Dillon, HTL, located at 14 Route 4 West, Bridge West, New Jersey.
Mr. Donato, can you please provide your credentials to the board?
Sure. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture, graduated 1985 from New York Institute of Technology. Uh, received my New Jersey license to practice architecture in 1992, and I've held my own practice throughout New Jersey since 1995.
And your license are current?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'd ask that Mr. Donato be accepted as an expert in the area of architecture.
Any questions on this, uh, witness's qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Donato, can you please describe the applicant's plans for the property?
Sure.
I'm sorry, can you please use the microphone? There's one sitting on the table.
Thank you, sure, thank you. So the board, uh, the plans I have mounted on the boards are the plans that were submitted, uh, for tonight's meeting, and there's two sheets. Sheet A1 is a floor plan of the partial restaurant with the proposed outdoor seating, and sheet A2 is, uh, views, elevations of the structure, and a section cut through of the actual structure. Uh, so the existing building, which is the Malagros Restaurant, is located, uh, on 3 Street. It's located on Route 46, Lackawanna Avenue, and Walsh Drive. Uh, the building is kind of located in the middle of the, uh, property with parking all the way around, and the front door entrance, which I have on sheet A1, on the left side, that's the main entrance, that actually faces, uh, Lackawanna, uh, Avenue. And so the existing restaurant is, or the existing building is a one-story building, approximately just under 10,000 square feet. Uh, no basement, uh, so we have half the building is toward the back, which is kitchen and storage, and the front area, as you can see here, you got the entrance, you have dining that wraps around a center bar. Currently, inside the building, uh, the building is actually prior approval for seating was 300, uh, so 382 seats were approved for, uh, dining tables and bar seating. The owner, what he does, I've designed many restaurants for him, he tends to spread the seats around so that it's not so crowded. Currently, what he has with bar seating, dining, dining tables, is just about 250 seats in the existing bar. Uh, so all that will remain intact. We really, nothing's proposed for the inside, but what we're asking here, what we're here for tonight, is an outdoor covered glass, three-sided glass structure with a roof, uh, overlooking the Lackawanna Avenue, uh, part of the property. And you can see here, the entire structure is 67 feet 8 inches wide by about 16 feet 10 inches. It's gonna be one-story, or we're proposing it to be three sides of glass, and I'll show you the, uh, sheet A2 is... I have the front elevation which faces Lackawanna Avenue. You could see the main entrance doors to the left of it, and again, it's all glass, even the sides, all glass, uh, and, and a set of doors, uh, exiting and entering the, uh, the structure. Uh, again, it's a three-sided glass structure. I have seating in here. What, uh, we're proposing, it would have, uh, access from the building, uh, there's an existing door that would have access from the existing building to the proposed covered area, and we would have sliding doors also, uh, from the existing area into the proposed seating area. You can see we have seven tables with four, uh, seats per table. We have a little workstation and two little, two separate, uh, two-seaters, so we have a total of 32 seats proposed for this one-story enclosed glass structure. Uh, again, it's, it's about, this area is just about under 1,140 square feet. It's, uh, again, it's one-story overlooking, uh, basically it's overlooking a parking area, uh, adjacent to Lackawanna Avenue, and it's also screened pretty well and hidden from the street. Uh, it's a, it's a lot higher. The engineer can go over exactly how far off the property line it's located, but it's very well screened that you really don't notice this, this one-story glass structure. So basically, it's a, like I said, it's a 16-foot 10 by 67.8, one-story glass structure. Thank you. Board have any questions of this witness?
Any members of the board?
Oh, you go ahead, Nick. I'll go next. Nick? Sure, all right. Um, did you say you can get only in there from inside the restaurant?
So, I, so we do have doors, just egress, but really, the, the main, you would still come through the main entrance.
Right, you're not, you're not seating people from there?
No, exactly.
So they have to come in?
Seat you outside. And, and honestly, I've done many of his restaurants, and we're not expanding, like the restaurant, this restaurant specifically, don't think it had to 100% capacity. It's really this type of dining outdoor which attracts people, and it just, uh, makes for a more dining experience. But we're not asking for more people to come into the restaurant. But yes, the doors are really for exiting and not entering.
Mr. Math, you have?
So you're seeking variance relief for 1.9 feet for the setback? Because of this, right?
I believe, yes, I believe the engineer will set, I believe it's this location to the front property.
Yeah, just to support the variance relief, is there a technical reason why the size of this could not be reduced by 1.9 feet? I'm just looking for any reason why it has to be the size it does.
So what happens is, the existing area that this is proposed on, it was a previous walkway landscaping, is a retain, is a retaining wall. This structure goes to the outside of it, even though it's 16.10, the clearance inside is, uh, there's like a little landscape area, there's a wall, it's about 14 feet. So by putting tables, a walkway, and other tables against the area, it's pretty much used up.
Okay, thank you.
And also, this- And also, this is the side, and again, besides the parking, there's a pretty heavily landscaped tree area, so it's really hidden off the street.
Any other members of the board have questions?
Yes.
Hearing and seeing none, this...
Just a couple. Can you repeat? On the parking table, it said three eighty-two existing, but you testified that it's two hundred and, what is existing parking count?
Two fifty, no, no, not parking.
I mean, not parking, but seating, right?
Currently, the way he sets it up, he kind of spreads the tables out more, so it's two fifty.
Two fifty is existing, and then the proposed is another thirty-two seats?
Correct.
Okay. And then with the increased square footage, what was this increased square footage of the building area?
This, this, this posed is one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet, just about, one thousand one hundred and forty square feet, one-story, there's no addition here, it's all one level.
Okay, so you're below the three eighty-two seats that you're, that were previously approved, is that what the testimony is?
That's correct, right.
And then, in follow-up to Mr. Metz's question, this structure exists there to that?
It was built, exactly.
This was planned for the board? It's, it was built, I'm not going to go into why or how, but it currently exists, it currently exists. And then, okay, that was it, thank you.
Other members of the board, our professionals have any questions? Any members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you. I'd like to now call Ken Dykstra. Ken is our planner and also engineer, so we could have him sworn in.
Please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
All right, Kenneth Dykstra, D-Y-K-S-T-R-A, twenty-one Bowling Green Parkway Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Dykstra. Just for the benefit of the record, could you establish your credentials as a professional planner for the board, and then we'll go engineer second.
Okay, well, I've been a licensed professional planner for about more than twenty years. Basically, I became a planner after being an engineer, so the way it worked is professional engineers could apply and become planners. Rules have changed now, now you actually have to take, take some classes and things, but in that, in those days, I was able to just file the application and become a licensed planner, so I've been an engineer for...
He's very humble, what's your educational background? You do have one.
Yes, yes, I'm a degree civil engineer from Rutgers, I'm actually New Jersey licensed professional engineer, planner and land surveyor, so I have three licenses, they're all valid. I've been handling projects in site plans and subdivision projects for actually pushing forty years now in New Jersey, and have testified before many boards, including this one, over, you know, over the last thirty years.
So I'd ask that Mr. Dykstra be accepted as a expert in the area of planning and also engineering. I hope I didn't screw that up too much.
Are there any members of the board have questions on this expert's qualifications? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you. Mr. Dykstra, if you could please describe this project from an engineering perspective, and then also, in whatever order you want to go, also give justification for the variety of variances that I had read in the beginning.
Yes, and the colored version of the site plan is just that, it's the exact plan that was submitted, except we've added coloring to it.
Just mark that one as exhibit A-one, then.
And this is the planned noted site plan at Malagros Restaurant, sheet three of four, last revised July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think the attorney gave a pretty, pretty good description of all the relief we're seeking at the beginning, but I'll point out that this was formerly the TGI Fridays Restaurant for many years, and it's located at the, with three frontages really, US Route forty-six, Lackawanna Avenue, and Wall Street. And access is primarily from Wall Street, although there is a access through the adjacent site from Route forty-six. The adjacent site, they, that's, they call it the Hilltop Plaza now, it's a, it's a three-story office, office building, you know, although the lower level is now a gym, I noticed tonight, and, you know, as with many of these office buildings, it doesn't appear to be fully occupied. This used to be one combined site about, I think about two thousand twenty, it was subdivided, so basically, a lot line was struck between the restaurant and the office building, and it went right down through the middle of the parking lot, and there's a combination of easements, cross-access easements, easements for water and sewer utilities and the like. So really, the only thing that has changed is, there's, we're seeking the approval for this, this addition that was placed on the property, the eleven hundred and forty square feet. You know, really, that triggered the setback variance to Lackawanna Avenue, and, and I would, and the architect was correct, there is an elevation differential, the, I mean, that, the location is really, you can't notice the one point nine foot relief we're seeking, eighty-foot setback is required from the Lackawanna Avenue right away, and we're proposed at seventy-eight point one feet. It's basically an increase in coverage, there were sidewalks and other things there, so the coverage change was relatively minor, seven hundred and thirty-three square feet impervious, still keeps us way under the requirements. In this zone, we're actually allowed eighty percent coverage, and the site is now covered at seventy-two point eight percent. And building coverage were way under the twenty percent that's allowed, I think that's, you know, we're, building coverage is ten point eight percent at this point, where twenty percent is allowed. So that's the main point of the relief. The other thing that happened is, there's a storage container there for, which is necessary for the restaurant, the extra tables and chairs are stored in there, and that took up one parking space. So technically, we require relief for one parking space. Hundred twenty-six now exist, if you take away the space where the container is, and the ordinance requires a hundred twenty-seven, but that's based on that three hundred eighty-two seat count that was approved for, back with the TGI Fridays. And, you know, the applicant's not actually using that many seats, although he, you know, doesn't want, he doesn't want to lose his ability to have three hundred eighty-two seats if he ever has the need, but at this point, we're probably under three hundred in terms of actual needed spaces, or seats, rather. So, so the relief is, in my view, de minimis, it's only one point eight feet, it's not noticeable. I think allowing this promotes the general welfare, we want our restaurants to be successful, and that outdoor, what's kind of, it's, it's got glass, so it's actually an indoor space, but it's like a sunroom, a very nice space that's desirable, and makes the, helps the efficiency of the business, and the, and the patrons apparently like this space a lot, So I see no detriment to you granting that variance whatsoever, and there's really no impact to the neighboring properties. I mean, across the street, across Wall Street, you have basically loading docks and trucks, they would have no, I'm sure they have no objection. The parking lot has like more spaces than are needed, you know, I was out there tonight, not that it's a full night, but, you know, not even a third of the spaces are being used. The other thing is, there's a sign out on Wall Street that's actually in the municipal right-of-way, and we're going to shift that sign back. Turns out that sign's not even for Malagros, that's actually for Hilltop Plaza, the adjacent building, but we're willing to move it back, or have that, then move it back out two feet from your right-of-way, so we're going to move it, it's, right now, it's in the right-of-way about five feet, and we're just going to slide it back and have a, create an actual two-foot setback. I think fifteen's required, but nevertheless, it's, right now, it's in the right-of-way, we're going to move it back and have it clear. It's a relatively small unlit sign, so I don't think there's any, any reason why you shouldn't grant that variance.
What sign is that?
There's a sign right over the driveway access from Wall Street.
It's the freestanding sign?
Yeah, it's a freestanding sign.
That's your, your business sign, it's not a directional sign?
It's Hilltop Plaza, it's not our business, it's for the adjacent building.
Could you point on the map where it is?
Yes.
You're not talking about the freestanding, it says Malagros.
For Malagros, freestanding is on Route forty-six, that's already, it's higher, but that's an existing, pre-existing condition, we're not changing that. This is the, basically, it's a small unlit sign, it's actually pretty...
So it's on the Malagros property, and you're moving, well, it's on the town property?
It's, it's on both, it's actually on Malagros property, but these, this was originally one property fairly recently, and there's easements to allow that, as I understand it.
Okay, so you've got...
There's cross-easements for access and driveways and sewer drainage, and that sign, as I understand it.
So that's the monument sign that you were talking about in, as your variance relief that you're requesting?
Yes, and it only recently came to our attention that it's not actually our sign.
It's not, it's not actually a monument sign either, it's a sign on two posts, yeah.
I don't recall that if that's on our ad permits to it, I don't...
It may not have, I don't know, it's not lit or anything, it's relatively, you know, it's not a high-level sign, let's put it that way, it's, it's not lit, it's not large, and that's a possibility, maybe never had permits, I don't, I don't know. It simply says Hilltop Plaza, and it has the address of the adjacent building.
Well, it's on Google Maps, so...
That's, well, yes. All right, so the other thing, we have a variance for the accessory structure in the front yard, and that relates to the, the storage container?
Can you point where that is?
Yeah, that's on the, the westward side of the building, the Wall Street side. So we have a property that actually has three, three roads, so you have basically three front yards, so that's why it's technically in a front yard, you can't, you're not allowed to have an accessory structure in a front yard area, only a side yard. So the only alternative to have it not in a front yard would be to have it on the south side of the building, but that's, that's, that's a, that's kind of an important customer parking area, so we don't, we prefer it where it is, that's near the, the enclosure for the dumpsters, so that's the proper place for the storage container, in my opinion.
And that storage container contains tables and chairs?
I, I didn't look inside, but that's what the applicant informed me of, yes.
Okay, I hate to go all Dave Stivers on you, but if you could just point north, east, west, and south on that map, because I...
North arrow is, wait, my, this direction is north.
Okay, so you're putting...
Towards the mountain, towards the mountain lakes.
The container is where precisely?
It's on the, I guess I'll call it the southwest side of the building.
Okay, that's...
So not on the, you wouldn't see it from forty-six, you won't, you won't see it from Lackawanna Drive, you could see it from Wall Street, if you viewed the property, from that direction.
Which way to, do the, do the doors open? Do the doors open towards the parking lot or towards the building of the, of the trailer?
I think the, yeah, towards the building, right?
Towards the building?
Yeah, yeah, there's a sidewalk there, and it opens towards the building.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So that's, that's essentially the case, those are the variances, the other conditions were existing conditions that were already mentioned.
Counselor, you've got...
That's all we have for him.
And this trailer was there when you bought, when, when Malagros took over this building?
No.
So you guys put it there?
Well, the applicant did, yes.
The applicant did.
All right, any questions, my members of the board?
There was a note in here about that, wasn't there?
Jennifer?
Is, is there any possibility of putting a shed on the property and not having a storage container? As the zoning officer and director in town, storage containers are becoming, people are popping them up all over the property. Well, why can't I have it, he has it? Why can't I have it, he has it? And they're, they're starting to be in all the properties and popping up, and they're not permitted in any of the zones, they're considered a temporary storage container, we were wondering if there was any way to make it look less like a storage container, since it's going to be permanent?
One of the suggestions that we had was, if the board would, you know, think that this would be an acceptable compromise, due to cost concerns, the applicant did not want to install a, an actual, you know, freestanding, you know, shed, but the applicant would be willing to paint it a color, like a green or something, that would make it less visible. We don't think it's that visible as it is where it's located, but the applicant would be willing to paint it.
That's correct.
If that would be something the board would be amenable to.
You mean like to match the restaurant colors, so like, so it fits in with it?
Yeah.
Well, the building's red brick and the container's red. I don't know, because I haven't...
Right, but it does have some of those container labelings on it and stuff, so...
Yeah, so it didn't have that, and looked more...
Is it, is it your, is it your container, or is this like, you're renting it or something like that?
It's the applicant's container.
As I say, make it look as, as close you can to the, to the building, you know, get all the old stuff on it. Look, I mean, it looks like an isolator.
We would agree, we would agree, we would agree to that.
I'm sorry, what was the...
The, the suggestion from the board was to paint the container, to remove any markings on it, so it's the same, the red color, would that be acceptable?
That's two guys, I think, but, I mean, something where it blends in with your restaurant more, in theme and stuff.
We'd be agreeable whatever color you guys want.
That'd be a good idea.
Is the, you said it's next to the dumpster?
Enclosure area, yes.
So the dumpster is enclosed, is it a fence, or?
Yeah, the dumpsters are entirely enclosed in the fenced area, yes, so this is outside of the fenced area.
It's in a parking space.
It's in a parking space, yeah.
Could, could you extend the fencing or something to shield it more?
Well, we prefer to just paint it, but certainly fencing could be extended.
Yeah, what... We, we do want to have it buffered from public view, is really what we want, as well as having it look nice.
Understood. Okay, so fencing, fencing would be acceptable to the applicant?
Yeah.
Other members of the board have questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time? Mr. Kangiano?
Yeah, just on the, the shipping container, I mean, you're asking for variance relief for it, and it's a temporary structure, that's not really allowed in, 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 in the, per code. This board normally, as for heavy screening and heavy buffering of something like this, as well, wouldn't have it be in a parking stall. So normally, a heavy, a very elaborate screening of vegetation, maybe a solid brick enclosure around it, you're going to stick with a container, this thing's sticking out in the parking lot, in the front yard.
Well, we're willing to, and I'll point out that the, that whole dumpster enclosure in there is technically in the, in the front yard also, but we could push that container further back and adjust the sidewalk, and then have the enclosure go entirely around it.
That's up to the board, I just wanted to bring it up.
That's, that's what, that's what we're recommending, that's what we're offering at this point, yes.
The enclosure is, honestly, when you drive through the parking lot, it looks good, like you don't notice the enclosure so much, it blends in, the container kind of jumps out at you, so what's already there, you're right, is in the front yard, but, but it, it looks good, like it blends in where the container, people see it and say, well, they have it, so...
Yeah, so we're going to, the container's going to be there, but you're no longer going to see it, once we move it, move it closer to the building and...
How high is that fence, do, would you think?
Well, it covers, encloses all the dumpsters, it's got to be at least eight feet.
Okay, so the height, we need variance.
And how high's the container?
You know, it's a, that's, I don't think it's over eight feet.
About ten feet.
It's a typical six-seat container, I'd have to look it up, but...
So it's going to extend over the top of the screening?
No, it was just out there, I don't think so.
Hold on a minute. No, the, the...
I think it's below it, right?
Below it.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yes.
So, so we would just need the variance for the height, because fences are six feet, but yeah, that, that would definitely come in.
All right, so we'll, yeah, so we'll, I guess there's an existing variance for the fence height already then on record, so we'll just expand that. for the fence height already then on record, so we'll just ex, expand that variance to cover the container.
And our notice contained any and all variances that the waivers that the board deems appropriate, so we're happy to make it uniform. We think that's a good suggestion.
And would you agree to work with the zoning officer and maybe the board planner to confirm that the shielding and screening is acceptable?
Absolutely.
And there is vegetative screening of arbivideae and different plantings around the screening. That, that should be added as well.
Okay.
Um, I have some regular engineering questions.
Yeah, I do. I did see your report.
Just before we move on, I just want to make sure that we got this accurate. We will work with, obviously, you to make sure that it's properly screened, but one of the, the applicant, um, brought up that if we add more screening, it would impact the parking spots more, so the parking deck more, it's deck, not that.
Well, you're in the park, have you had more parking than you need?
That's true. That's true. So we'll work with your office and you-
Well, I think the planner is, is probably the best suited.
Then we'll work with you.
Just one question though. Is there any possibility of moving it within the existing enclosure? Is there no room for that?
That looked quite full when I was out there today. But we can move it closer to it. There's a little bit of space there. Oh, okay, yeah, all right, he's right. But we're, but we're gonna take the fence out and wrap it around.
Better to lose two spaces and make it look good.
All right, so we'll, so we'll expand our, uh, parking relief then too by one more space, just to make sure we get this buffered properly.
Andrew, did you have more?
Yeah, I had some, uh, my comment regarding, um, the increase in purpose there. I think there's 733 square feet increase.
That's right.
What is your plan to mitigate and meet the stormwater management, the minor stormwater management requirement for, uh?
Well, we were, uh, we were, I thought it was a relatively minor amount of increase and we were hoping not to have to put a drywall in for that space.
That's exactly why the ordinance is there.
I know, it's three, three-
You're right in that sweet spot.
Three inch, three inches. Well, I, the other thing I thought about, uh, was to, uh, we have detention basin right nearby. We may be able to just enhance the volume of that a bit, rather than trying to put a drywall out there.
It's up to you, but we ask that, uh, not ask, it's, it's a requirement to do stormwater mitigation for anything over the 400 square feet.
Right, but this doesn't have any, uh, any liter drains, right? This is just, it's just-
If you read, it doesn't have to be of that location.
Okay.
To read the ordinance.
No, I did read it. Yeah, I did check it, because I saw that in your report, yes. I checked that earlier today.
Um, also, um, on your sheet four for the lighting plan, I'm just confused on what's proposed and what's existing and what you're trying to do with the lighting.
We're, uh, we were just documenting what's existing. We didn't, uh, we're not proposing any new lighting.
The lighting that's around the top of the building, that's almost like an LED, that was a, that was going to be a zoning violation. Once zoning was, uh, my co-enforcement officer was about to come out and do violation notices, but you submitted the application, so then we never sent them. And you put on your application the concerns that we had, so we never sent anything. So there was something that he had about lighting along the top, so if you could legalize that, that way, um-
Yeah, yeah, along the, along the, the top of the building, there's these lights, they're really low intensity. I was looking at them today. They don't, uh, they just give the building a nice look. They really don't, uh, they're not intense lighting. They're just subtle lights that go all the way around the building to define the roof line.
Yes.
So if that's, uh, we'd like to legalize those, of course, yes.
So is, again, to clarify, you have a lighting plan on here, but this does not, is this not proposed lighting? It's represented to be existing lighting?
That, that's right.
I would say for-
But it doesn't, it doesn't show those, uh, perim, those roof perimeter lights that we just talked about.
No, but it, but it has, uh, lighting, photometrics and, and foot candles and, and all kinds of, uh, uh-
Right.
Items that this would have been a part of a prior approval. Um, are you suggesting you're gonna be changing the lighting in any way?
No, the reason, that was in the completeness reviews, that we had to produce a lighting plan, so that's why we created the, uh, existing conditions lighting plan.
Existing lighting plan. I would clarify that, that it's existing lighting.
Okay.
Um, so are, is, is any new lighting, uh, pole lighting or building mounted lighting for, uh, being proposed?
I don't believe the new enclosure has any, any proposed lighting, right? So, so no, other than the lights that define the, the, the roof of the building, the roof line of the building, that we were just discussing.
But those aren't pole.
They're not pole, no, but they're, that's right.
Um, yeah, revise your plan to make it clear that those exist, that existing lighting.
Okay, yes, we will.
Um, I don't think I have anything else. That was it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have a question actually for the board, and that is, we seem to be being presented with something new with regard to lighting that doesn't violate certain parts of our ordinance and yet it's different than what our ordinance had anticipated. With the lights higher and different. How do you, how do you, I, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't start doing things on an ad hoc basis that we'll find ourselves up the creek with some other applicant that we don't like what they're doing. So I'm just, I'm just actually looking at our engineer and-
Yeah, what is, I, I, there's no lighting proposed as of now. What, what are you talking about?
Well, the question really comes down to the, the, the roof perimeter lighting that we-
I don't, it's not shown on the plan, is it?
No, no, it's just, uh, they're, I think he called them Christmas tree lights. They're kind of like, they just, they're, they're a kind of a close space thing and they just define, they just define the roof line of the building. I don't know, you know, if you went out there at night, it's, it's very, very apparent.
It's become a very common thing.
It's, uh, it's actually very attractive on this building and it's not, they're not, in my view, they're, uh, they're, they're not high intensity and, uh, it's attractive.
So can you add those to the plan when you revise the existing lighting?
Yes.
I don't know what the ordinance-
It, it doesn't, it doesn't-
I would say so.
That's why they're seeking to add it, to legalize it and propose it.
So the lighting's not permitted, you're proposing it, and you're asking the board to give a relief on it?
Well, I, I'm not, it's not that it's not permitted, it wasn't approved, and that's why there was gonna be a violation, right?
Right.
The ordinance is not permitted, that by the way.
If it's considered neon, it, it's supposed to be no neon, so.
No, I don't think- We did amend our application after your office flagged that.
Yep.
We amended our application to include that as well as the storage container. Those were two things that were not originally part of our application, and that's why this application had been filed a long time ago. So we then amended it to come back, because we wanted to memorialize the fact that we did have what we're calling permanent Christmas lights along the top of the building. Um, they're more, they're decorative in nature.
Yes.
That's right.
So that's the purpose of it, and we requested all variances associated with that.
We don't even know what kind of relief we're giving.
Well, this is why I brought up the question, because, you know, Ms. Smith, what, what are your thoughts on lighting like this? Because you have to-
It can be done and look really well, and it can be done and be glaring and in violation of, uh, the ordinance. When done correctly, it brings attention and it, and it looks really well. This is a site where it, it really does look very well. But I have other sites where it's so glaring that you think there was a cop car, like in, in the lot with them, um, we've seen, where this is not. Where the, the zoning officer and my department are looking at this as considered almost like the neon, so we're not permitting it. But there have been many applications that have gone to the board of adjustment to seek approval while there were other approvals, as is this. So we're asking applicants, on a case-by-case basis, to come before the board and be approved, because some are okay and some are not. So depending on, on, on the, that's why we ask them to add it, to legalize it, and to give it the appropriate variances.
You know, it's, I and the Audubon Society have problems with hotspots, because hotspots bring birds into conflict with human developments. And I like what they've got, but what I'd love to do is, I, I guess we need to have a discussion or, or some sort of a, of a, program to look into what is a good form of this that would be enforceable. Give people who have good plans a good lighting plan and yet not have the hotspots that I've discussed, where, where, uh, a, a person could be driving along and it just, there's that bright spot over there that distracts them.
Correct.
Or distracts wildlife in some way. Uh, where allowing ones that simply look good and draw attention, appropriate attention to a commercial enterprise- -that is enforceable and not, uh, an ad hoc thing.
They're very common in windows, in store frames. They're trying to bring attention, but they can be done and be very glaring and bright and we get complaints. But there, there's probably a lot of businesses in town that probably have this already along the edge. I'm trying to think, um, on Route 10, the, um, the restaurant on the corner of 10 and 202, when they came to the board, they asked for the lighting around and it, it's the same thing. It's, it's subtle. It makes it look good. They, and they got a variance for it. That was years ago.
Is, is there a difference in the amount of illumination that's coming out of each one, perhaps?
Yes. Some are extremely bright and blinding and others just give it enough attention to make it look good but not be glaring.
So just like our sound ordinances, we could have an ordinance specifying just how bright the lights could be?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. We have a bunch of ordinances we're working on now. Christine's working on some and I'm working on some that, to make some changes when we come up to make changes. Right now, we're not permitting it. We're telling applicants they have to apply, depending on where it is and what it is to the boards.
Because I would love this board to find some enforceable, uh, ordinance or whatever proposal that we could send to the council and say, "Give our zoning office some guidance as to what would be acceptable and what's not."
Well, what is the wattage on each bulb? Seven watts, 10 watts?
I, I don't know it personally, but they were-
You have to go with the amount of illumination that comes off. I mean, Andrew-
Yeah, I, I can shed a little light on this. I mean, the ordinance, 430, 258 glare, and the term hotspot or glare, the, the, the light shining out is what the glare ordinance is, is, is about. And about three-quarters of the way through the paragraph, "The lighting of any sign, building exterior, fountain or decorative fissure, fixture shall be placed in such a manner that it is directed toward the object and light does not disseminate glare out." So it would require, I mean, this light is, the chairman's point, is pointing out. It's not lighting the ground. It's not lighting the building. It's not lighting a sign. And as, as the ordinance reads, it goes against what the ordinance allows.
But it's not producing-
I think unfortunately that ordinance is for industrial areas, within the performance standards.
Performance? I don't know.
No, it's in, it's in 430, 258.
It, it's not?
It's in the regular zoning ordinance.
Right, 430.
Okay.
That's what we use.
430, 258.
That's what you've been using?
Yeah.
All right.
And we're using in the, in the, the sign ordinance, the no neon. I can get you all those sections, if that helps.
What I, what I would love to get would be a good engineering perspective on just how bright something is, not by wattage, but by the amount of, of light that is perceived off the, off the property.
Lumens, sir.
Lumens, et cetera. Well, it, part of the problem is the way we measure lumens. If you med, try to measure the lumens from this, you may end up with, with next to nothing. And that's fine, but you'll ever, also have others where the, the measurements show a lot less than actually is perceived by somebody who's driving along next to it or by the wildlife that's distracted by it.
Well, I'll say this. We have to amend a lot of our ordinances, as you know, Jen. Lighting has changed over the course of decades, and I can tell you, I drive by this building and I don't see it as a bright spot, hotspot. I don't see it as that. I, it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. Um, other areas, like Lake High Waffle, do stick out like a sore thumb and very bright. Um, so, I mean, I don't know what the, what the, the bottom line's gonna be with this, uh, project, but I don't see any light pollution whatsoever. So I know what our ordinance reads, you know, you explain that, but we're willing to start revamping some of our ordinances. And, um, that's just my opinion. Uh, so, 'cause I could tell you LED lights as opposed to soft lights, uh, lighter light. I know when you buy the white soft lights, the brightness can be, but when you get the other ones that are more like the traditional, it's not as, not as, you know. So, I mean, I don't want to get stuck on this over lighting.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted-
But I, 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 I see where you're going with it, 'cause there are spots and precipities that are like, you can see them from a satellite.
Yep. All right, I just wanted to bring it up and see if we could get some more information on how to prevent others. I don't have a problem with this particular application, but I was thinking more for the board's consideration down the, down the way, because there are places where you see these lights that are not so nice. And I don't know how Jennifer can measure them.
And I agree with you. I, I notified Jennifer on a, um, a business property that was lit like a, I, I actually thought there was a fire in the area, 'cause that's where you, you used to get your fire trucks. They laid everything up and it wasn't, was the building.
So I, I'm sorry if I distracted you from this particular application on this, but that's always been a bit of a thing for me. So, all right.
That's our case. Um, you know, we appreciate all the board's comments. It's, this is a little unusual situation, but in a way, or in a lot of ways, because it's already up and the lights are already up, so we know, you know, what the impact is and, you know, we think the property looks good and we hope the board agrees. And with that, we'll go to the board.
All right, are there any members of the public who have any comments or objections to this particular case at this time? One speak in favor. Hearing and saying none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Um, what, uh, before we go to moving a resolution, what have we agreed to here that we need to contend with?
Yep, the applicant agreed to comply with the board professional letters, report, uh, recommendations and comments. The applicant agreed to re-stripe the parking lot. To fence, um, the storage container to match the dumpster enclosure, um, and to work with the board planner and zoning officer to confirm that the shielding is acceptable and include landscaping as necessary and possibly painting the storage container. And I believe it was discussed that if the landscaping and shielding requires the removal of an additional parking space, that would be acceptable. Um, and there, the applicant is also requesting relief for the existing lighting on the roof.
And would we require extra variance for the, the height of the extended trench?
Yes, any, any relief necessary for that would be a part of the application.
I'd like to add, uh, on the, the parking and the seating, it's, uh, it's sounding like you need a reduction of two spaces, that your proposed parking count would go down. You have, you need one space or three seats. Your, your existing approved seating is, is it 382?
Yes.
So that would go down by six spaces and your, your, your-
Six seats.
Six seats, rather. Six seats and then, um, so that, amend the application for the proposed seating to be-
So that eliminates our parking variance, right? So, okay.
Spot. Do I have a motion to that effect?
376, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, make a motion to approve application number- Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve application number 24 colon 511, Malagros 3835, Route 46, Lock 136, Lot 66.03, for minor site plan with C variance to legalize the addition, an addition, building-mounted lighting and a, a, a container storage, along with all of the conditions outlined just prior to this motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Nora, what do you call the roll, please?
Barberia.
Yes.
Deech.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Colatano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, JBL.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lux, thank you. Anything else that needs to be brought to this board at this time?
I think, Mr. Dinsmore, I think you were looking for a Clark W. Griswold ordinance. I think that's where you were going.
Hmm, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I wish.
Any, any opposed? So ordered.